And then probably like half.
So he took some of this, and then this goes over here. There's lots of them. It's just in kind of...
I just have to see where my...
It's not that hard to do. It's just a matter of numbers.
Yeah. But it's one of the... I guess it's probably not... We need registered persons. It was like the only person I have. Oh, yeah, sure. Some of the numbers are favorite. I would assume.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Bienvenidos para toda la gente. And we are glad to have you all here. This is a great day. City Council, as we begin already in the dark. So sometimes the council and mayor stay in the dark. But we hope that we can enlighten everyone as we go through this meeting. Prior to this meeting, we had a workshop in the Dole Conference Room to discuss redistricting the city council boundaries within Midvale City. Now, the process is probably not going to be completed until May, June, somewhere through there, because we have to wait for data to come from the county, and they have to set their lines, and then the city sets its lines within as much as we can. So it'll take a long time, but just to let you know, the process has started. And it will, it will be six months probably before we are done as a city. We also had a workshop on traffic control policies. We are in the process of setting up a committee that receives complaints, I guess is the right word, from citizens that maybe they're speeding on their street, or it's a dangerous intersection. We hear of some intersections where tires are screeching all the time. Okay? Things like that. Maybe pedestrian safety comes into question. Those kinds of things, when this committee is set up enough to where you hear about it and know how to have input as to what they discuss, then you can start talking about those kinds of things that we need to address. So I want to welcome everybody tonight, and we're going to begin with a pledge of allegiance. Would you all please stand and pledge the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Rory, would you call the role of the city council, please?
Yes, Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Gettle. Excuse me, Gettle.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Sperry.
Here.
And Glover.
Here.
Thank you. We're now going to have a report from our Unified Fire Department. We welcome Chief Brad to come up and, Brad Larson, give us a report, please, what's happened. And I see little things going vertical over there on the new station.
Yes, isn't it great? That's awesome. Things are moving right along. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's good to be with you tonight. I'll start out my report with some sad news. As many of you may be aware, we lost one of our dear firefighters. With great sadness, Captain Merrill Bone passed away on October 31st due to complications from COVID. He started his career with Salt Lake City Fire. Captain Merrill Bone and I actually started that same day together. So we have a long history together. He was also a member of the Heavy Rescue Program, an active member of Utah Task Force One, where he was deployed multiple times, including New York City following the events of September 11th, 2001. Captain Bone retired from Salt Lake City Fire Department after 20 years, and in 2006, joined the Unified Fire Authority shortly after as a paramedic in August of 2006. And I have to say that Captain Bone was one of the best paramedics I think that I have ever known. He was exceptional. During his career at Unified Fire, Captain Bone held the rank of paramedic and captain. At the time of his passing, he was, he called Station 111 in Magna Home. And I know that Captain Bone did work here in Midvale from time to time. He has been an influential member of the fire service, not only to those in the Salt Lake Valley, but nationally. Merrill's legacy will live on in the lives of those he helped mentor in his 35 years of dedication to the service of others. He will be sorely missed. Merrill was a very unique individual. There's nobody like him. And he served the community for a lot of years with a lot of dedication. And on a personal level, I'm really going to miss Merrill. We have hired four paramedics. We call them paramedic laterals. That means they're already paramedics. We're bringing them on the department after a selection process so that they can jump right in to fill some paramedic slots, where we're almost a little short right now. So that'll really help out and get them in there quickly. They're going to be attending a four-week recruit camp that starts in mid-November and runs through graduation ceremony mid-December. I'll talk about our centennial here at the very end. We've had some promotions. One I want to mention particularly, David Bradley, to Fire Prevention Specialist, who is serving as your area fire marshal here in Midvale. He's going to do a great job. He's excited and enthusiastic, and he brings that into our division, and we're really glad to have him. Jason Cobal was promoted to Paramedic Specialist II. Brad Jewett to Municipal Services Emergency Managing. And I guess you'll get a chance to hear from him in a little bit. Emergency Management Planning Specialist. And Todd Johnson was promoted to Engineer. I think we'll go ahead and jump right into the quarterly report. Okay. Oh, you need it again? Yeah. While they're doing that, I'll go ahead and take care of this other issue that I really would like to do. And I apologize, I meant to get these to the council members, the mayor, and Chief Thomas before I had to take leave.
You don't need to apologize. He gave them to me. I forgot to give them to you. So I apologize.
Well, okay, I apologize for not being here. In any event, UFA and Salt Lake County's Fires 100 Anniversary is November 21st, 2021. We have commemorated the year with special coins and badges. The fire department's fire station was on 4736 South State Street, now the site of BMW of Murray. I think that's their used car lot. And was led by Albert Marriott. While Chief Marriott's badge number would have been one, his great-grandnephew, Rob Marriott, currently works with us as a Heavy Rescue Tech at Station 117 in Taylorsville. He wears badge number 1101, representing that he was the 1,101st full-time firefighter to work at UFA. So with a little bit of that background, we have something we want to present to each of you council members, the mayor, and Chief Thomas. Chief Thomas, I apologize, I opened your envelope. I wanted to show off the commemorative coin. It, Salt Lake County Fire, Unified Fire Authority, 100 years, celebrating 100 years, 1921 Centennial, 2021. And I'd just like to read this. It's not often that we get to give a special thanks to our partners, council members, mayor, Chief Thomas, for your help in our efforts in serving the community as we do this together. The Unified Fire Authority, formerly Salt Lake County, is celebrating 100 years of service this year. Our staff created a centennial challenge coin to celebrate the anniversary. Challenge coins have been around since the Roman Empire, when generals would use them to recognize a soldier's achievements. The coins gained popularity in the U.S. during World War I and World War II, with popularity increasing during the Vietnam War. Our firefighters use these coins to recognize the good work and occasionally trade them with other fire departments. Our hope is that they commemorate and honor all those who have come before us in starting and building Salt Lake County Fire and Unified Fire Authority. UFA is partnering together to serve our communities. We are proud of our service, and this is Chief Peterson's letter. He said, "And I wanted to share one of these coins as a token of our appreciation for your role in helping us make life better for the people we serve." So with that, if it's all right, I'd like to approach the podium and present each of you with your envelope with the letter from Chief Peterson and one of the service coins.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
And Chief Thomas.
So I think perhaps it's appropriate if all of us join in a round of applause in thanking our council members, our mayor, and our...
Those kinds of things that we need to address. So I want to welcome everybody tonight, and we're going to begin with a pledge of allegiance. Would you all please stand and pledge the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Rory, would you call the role of the city council, please?
Yes, Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Gettle. Excuse me, Gettle.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Sperry.
Here.
And Glover.
Here.
Thank you. We're now going to have a report from our Unified Fire Department. We welcome Chief Brad to come up and Brad Larson, give us a report, please, what's happened? And I see little things going vertical over there on the new station.
Yes, isn't it great? That's awesome. Things are moving right along. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's good to be with you tonight. I'll start out my report with some sad news. As many of you may be aware, we lost one of our dear firefighters. With great sadness, Captain Merrill Bone passed away on October 31st due to complications from COVID. He started his career with Salt Lake City Fire. Captain Merrill Bone and I actually started that same day together, so we have a long history together. He was also a member of the Heavy Rescue Program, an active member of Utah Task Force One, where he was deployed multiple times, including New York City, following the events of September 11th, 2001. Captain Bone retired from Salt Lake City Fire Department after 20 years, and in 2006, joined the Unified Fire Authority shortly after as a paramedic in August of 2006. And I have to say that Captain Bone was one of the best paramedics, I think, that I have ever known. He was exceptional. During his career at Unified Fire, Captain Bone held the rank of paramedic and captain. At the time of his passing, he was, he called Station 111 in Magna Home. And I know that Captain Bone did work here in Midvale from time to time. He has been an influential member of the fire service, not only to those in the Salt Lake Valley, but nationally. Merrill's legacy will live on in the lives of those he helped mentor in his 35 years of dedication to the service of others. He will be sorely missed. Merrill was a very unique individual. There's nobody like him. And he served the community for a lot of years with a lot of dedication. And on a personal level, I'm really going to miss Merrill. We have hired four paramedics. We call them paramedic laterals. That means they're already paramedics. We're bringing them on the department after a selection process so that they can jump right in to fill some paramedic slots, where we're almost a little short right now, so that'll really help out and get them in there quickly. They're going to be attending a four-week recruit camp that starts in mid-November and runs through graduation ceremony mid-December. I'll talk about our centennial here at the very end. We've had some promotions. One I want to mention particularly, David Bradley to Fire Prevention Specialist, who is serving as your area fire marshal here in Midvale. He's going to do a great job. He's excited and enthusiastic, and he brings that into our division, and we're really glad to have him. Jason Cobal was promoted to Paramedic Specialist II. Brad Jewett to Municipal Services Emergency Managing, and I guess you'll get a chance to hear from him in a little bit. Emergency Management Planning Specialist, and Todd Johnson was promoted to Engineer. I think we'll go ahead and jump right into the quarterly report.
You get the flasher.
Okay.
You're a flasher.
Oh, you need it again?
Yeah.
While they're doing that, I'll go ahead and take care of this other issue that I really would like to do. And I apologize, I meant to get these to the council members, the mayor, and Chief Thomas before I had to take leave.
You don't need to apologize. He gave them to me. I forgot to give them to you, so I apologize.
Well, okay, I apologize for not being here. In any event, UFA in Salt Lake County's Fires 100 anniversary is November 21st, 2021. We have commemorated the year with special coins and badges. The Fire Department's fire station was on 4736 South State Street, now the site of the BMW of Murray, I think that's their used car lot, and was led by Albert Marriott. While Chief Marriott's badge number would have been one, his great-grandnephew, Rob Marriott, currently works with us as a Heavy Rescue Tech at Station 117 in Taylorsville. He wears badge number 1101, representing that he was the 1,101st full-time firefighter to work at UFA. So with a little bit of that background, we have something we want to present to each of you council members, the mayor, Chief Thomas. Chief Thomas, I apologize, I opened your envelope. I wanted to show off the commemorative coin.
Oh, wow.
It's Salt Lake County Fire Unified Fire Authority, 100 years, celebrating 100 years, 1921 centennial, 2021.
Wow.
And I'd just like to read this. It's not often that we get to give a special thanks to our partners, council members, mayor, Chief Thomas, for your help in our efforts in serving the community as we do this together. The Unified Fire Authority, formerly Salt Lake County, is celebrating 100 years of service this year. Our staff created a Centennial Challenge Coin to celebrate the anniversary. Challenge Coins have been around since the Roman Empire, when generals would use them to recognize a soldier's achievements. The coins gained popularity in the U.S. during World War I and World War II, with popularity increasing during the Vietnam War. Our firefighters use these coins to recognize the good work and occasionally trade them with other fire departments. Our hope is that they commemorate and honor all those who have come before us in starting and building Salt Lake County Fire and Unified Fire Authority. UFA is partnering together to serve our communities. We are proud of our service, and this is Chief Peterson's letter. He said, "And I wanted to share one of these coins as a token of our appreciation for your role in helping us make life better for the people we serve." So with that, if it's all right, I'd like to approach the podium and present each of you with your envelope with the letter from Chief Peterson and one of the service coins.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
And Chief Thomas.
So I think perhaps it's appropriate if all of us join in a round of applause in thanking our council members, our mayor, and our chief. Thank you very much for all your help and support.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, are we ready? Okay, here's the quarterly report, the third quarter. I'll go over this very quickly. We've condensed the format to make it a little more, to simplify it and to make it a little bit more meaningful. So right at the very top, you can see our call volume. This was for the third quarter, for the three months. 1,032 calls. Over on the right, the four-year monthly comparison. This is for years 2018 through 2021, and you can see 2021 in black, that for each month, the numbers rose a little bit. Total top fire dispatches, outside rubbish fire was eight, surprisingly. Structure fire was six. Top EMS dispatches on the next column over, sick person, 118. Falls, 82, again, that's always seems to be kind of high. I remember, Mayor, somebody asked one time if we knew any trend or what causes that mostly, and you said gravity.
It does.
I thought that was pretty good. Top other dispatches, electrical wiring equipment problem, 22, and so on. Incoming units, if you look at the top engine and truck responses and the top ambulance responses, it gives the station and the number of units that responded during that quarter. Number of units meaning fire engines, ambulances, and so on. And the number, 946 and 789, definitely adds up more than 1,082, but remember, that's the number of engines and ambulances that responded to a call. So it averages out to about 1.6 number of units per call for the 1,032, if that makes sense.
What is the emergent definition?
Emergent total time? Is that what you're looking at?
You have the 1,032, and right next to it is emergent, 107. What's the definition of emergent for all of us?
Do you know, Brad?
Those would be like the prior one and two.
Like Charlie Delta?
Charlie Delta.
Charlie Delta, okay. Those are Charlie Delta calls, the more serious calls that go out. Alpha Bravo being...
Not so bad.
Yeah, not, they're bad, but not as bad. The emergent total time, 50th percentile, 90th percentile, essentially that means that we're arriving to the calls between five and eight minutes on there.
Chief, what's the, what's the goal to, what's the goal for response time?
I believe it's...
Six?
Six. Yep. And this really is helpful for our operations chief and the battalion chiefs, because they can break it down by each station, and they can look at those times and see, okay, is there an area we need to improve here? We're doing pretty good here. This month was good, this month wasn't. They can look at reasons behind it. Sometimes it might be a matter of traffic, you know? I know when they were doing construction down on 72, that can have an impact, you know, on the response time, obviously. But they can look at those factors and try to narrow it down and look at ways to improve. Go to the next slide, please. This is really good to kind of pinpoint where the calls are coming in and the different types. I'm a little bit colorblind, so I kind of have a hard time on all the dots telling what all of them are, but the fire, fire alarm, hazmat, you can kind of look around your city and see where those calls are coming in. Okay, go ahead and jump to the next slide. And this one is quite telling because it gives a call density. The darker colors are the higher density calls, and you'll notice that the 7200 South Corridor has the higher density of calls of anywhere else, pretty much in your city. And that's something we're looking at with, on our monthly meetings with the Road Home. Not only are we pulling numbers from the Road Home, but I've also started to pull call numbers along the 7200 South Corridor that may or may not be associated at all with that, but it does give you an idea of where the call volume is heavy in your city.
I, it struggles, it's a struggle for me to see this, because this is, this is not the densest part of our city, as far as resident population, so, you know, our taxes to pay for, the UFA, go to fund a lot of non-residential probably issues, which is fine, right? We're a community, we want to help everyone, I just wish we could remove the problem.
Yeah, I totally get that, council member. I, this is not an uncommon problem in cities throughout the United States. I know when I worked with Salt Lake City, there were similar issues. There were some corridors along Second South and on the west side that were, we had a high call density there. There were some other areas in other parts of the cities where we also had a high call volume. And then parts of the city that didn't have the high call volume, that was an issue, you know, for some of the taxpayers, for some of the council members. I don't know how you resolve that. I don't know if there's a good solution for it. But this does help us in our analytics and ways that we can improve our service. I don't know if it'll happen this year, but we are hoping at some point within the next year or two to get a Community Risk Reduction Specialist onboard. They would work closely with Brad and our information outreach group, maybe target some of these type of things to see if there are things that can be done to improve that. So. I believe that's all I had for my report. Are there any questions for me? Anything we can do to help with the report that's useful for you?
I think it's a very good report, Chief.
I like this, this updated version.
Okay. Yep. Great, and it's good that we've got Brad here. My world's the prevention world, he's emergency management. If there are questions on some of these things that I can't answer, I'm sure he can. And if I don't answer them the right way, I'm sure he can help me out. So, great, thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is a proclamation honoring one of our wonderful senior citizens who has gone to the other side of the veil and undoubtedly is organizing Cinco de Mayo en los cielos. And, and so I would like to read this proclamation, and then I would like to invite Dolores, and then her family members to come up, and we want to take a picture of all of you here this day, okay? All right. Proclamation honoring Fausto Rivas. Whereas during a long and productive lifetime, Fausto Rivas demonstrated in countless ways that his heart and soul was in Midvale. And whereas Fausto and his wife Dolores opened El Sombrero Restaurant on Center Street in 1978, and raised their six children in Midvale. And whereas Fausto served the community as the founder and president of the Midvale Cinco de Mayo Celebration since 1988. How many years is that? 30 years? Yeah. When he actively participated in up to the, in up to the day of his passing. And whereas a native of Michoacan, Mexico, Fausto's passion for sharing the rich Mexican culture through the Cinco de Mayo Celebration earned him the unofficial title of Mr. Cinco de Mayo Senor. And whereas Fausto received several honorable awards recognizing his efforts within the Mexican community of Utah, such as the Consulado de México O Agate Eli Award, the Centro Civico Mexicano Ignacio Zaragoza Award, and more. And whereas the devotion to giving back to his community earned him the respect and affection of people from all walks of life and ages. And whereas Fausto's legacy will live on through his children and grandchildren, who will carry on his love for Mid, for Midvale, Mexican culture, and the Cinco de Mayo Celebration. And now therefore, I, Robert M. Hale, Mayor of Midvale City, and the Midvale City Council hereby present this proclamation to the family of Fausto Rivas to recognize that his service, leadership, and commitment to our community improved the lives of Midvale residents. We express our sympathy and offer our condolences, adopted this ninth day of November 2021, over the signature of myself and the city council. Dolores? Okay, family, now you come up.
Laura, would you mind?
Mayor, you can stand behind me.
Do you want to go there, do you mind?
Will you send me? I'll send you the video. Did you already?
This is great, thank you very much.
Where do we look?
Somewhere in the middle.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. It's an honor to recognize some of our prized citizens that have built our city. Thank you for coming, Dolores. Thank you, family.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Barring any fear of crazy with COVID, we're hoping to be able to have a conversation here in the next couple of months about 2022 Cinco de Mayo, so really, we're recording.
That's music to our ears.
Us too, and hopefully all the neighbors.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. The next part of our program is for public comments. Any person wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time, and I want to begin with one electronic comment that came, and Matt Doll is going to read that, and then we'll open it up to anyone here.
Thank you, Mayor. We received a message from Zachary Joyce. It was after our normal deadline, but as a topic that is relevant towards today, I thought I would still read it. Does anyone have any issues, even though they missed the deadline to read it? My apologies for getting this comment to you late. Sorry, thank you. My apologies for getting this comment to you late, but it would not have been possible to submit it before 5 o'clock yesterday, as the Utah Legislature Redistricting Committee did not vote on their maps until later in the evening. I am extremely concerned about the potential impact on Midvale from the congressional redistricting maps approved in the committee hearings last night, November 8th, and that could be approved by the legislature as a whole as early as today, November 9th. Fortunately, it is tremendously unlikely that those maps will become law today, as it is unlikely the governor would sign them that soon. The proposed map splits Midvale between two congressional districts along I-15 and 7200 South. This effectively deprives Midvale of representation in the United States House of Representatives. In the event that Midvale, as a city, has had needs requiring the attention of Congress, we will not have one congressperson who represents all of Midvale, but two representatives who represent half of it. This means that electorally, such congresspeople will have only, will only have the half, sorry, I apologize, will only have half the incentive to respond as a congressperson representing all of Midvale would have. Perhaps more fundamentally, I understand that Midvale is a city that has often struggled to ensure that our residents feel truly united. I would not be the least bit surprised if residents by the Fort Union Shopping Center don't even know that Bingham Junction area is in the same city as them, and vice versa. Splitting the district in half can only contribute to a senseless and unproductive east versus west divide, and will do nothing to improve the quality of life and community in our city. I strongly urge the city council, or, sorry, I strongly urge the city and council to speak out against any map that divides our citizenry. Please use any and all platforms to support preserving our community in legislative maps. They also indicated that they would like for us, someone from the city, to respond to them via email.
Is that taken care of?
It has not, as of yet.
The challenging thing for us is, I totally agree with that email. It's been frustrating for me to watch Midvale be split in half, like always, geographically small, population small, and yet...
Whack right down the middle.
Whack right down the, but our legislators will vote against the maps, right? Stoddard, vote no on it today. So, you know, I definitely agree with this email, that it's an issue, and so do the people that represent us, but, you know, fortunately, they only have a small share of vote, and, you know, I think as individuals, we can contact other, the senators, because that's where the maps go next. I'm sure our senator will vote no on it, so, you know, you got to reach out to the, to the other ones, and, but I agree, I don't know what else we, we could do, you know?
And it would be interesting to note to them, just, we do have two congressmembers who represent Midvale now, part of the eastern, most eastern part of Midvale is split into John Curtis's district, so it's not a 50-50 split, there's probably, you know, a couple thousand people at the most that have split representation, but not saying, you know, obviously, for the record, I agree with that email, as I think all of elected officials up here do.
Okay, any comments from the public? You're welcome to come up and... You're welcome to come up and please state your name and give your remarks. Okay, seen none. All right. We'll go to council reports then and invite Councilmember Paul Glover to begin.
I just have a few things tonight. I'd like to comment on that the UDOT and state is now fixing 7200 South in Cotwood. It's starting to look much better. They're not quite done yet, but it's long been waited for. And thanks for the red striping against the Motto apartment complex. So I, it's going to be interesting to see what actually happens there now. I had a friend of mine that called and found, just wanted to get some information. And he called and they char, they, they give one parking space to you when you rent an apartment. The second one costs you $50 a month. And if you don't want to pay that, they say you have to park out on the street. That's what they're telling everybody. So. Just so you know what, in future, the way these apartment complexes, what they're doing, they are forcing people out on the streets. So I think we need to take that into consideration when we actually approve these things.
Can, can we say that our code requires, you know, the, the parking minimum requires free parking? You know, for residents? Like, I feel like that should be something we should be able to do.
Yeah, I, I just know that if, if we're approving so many parking spaces, somehow we've got to make sure that they're letting, they're not forcing people out on the streets. I mean, that's, that's what we don't want.
Right.
But it's happening, so just, I'm just bringing it up so we're aware in the future when we work on these ordinances of some ways to combat what's happening.
Because we definitely have that discussion as to how many units per, how many stalls per unit.
Per unit.
But you're right, we don't necessarily get into.
But if they're forcing people out onto the streets and not giving that many units, parking per units, then we have, it becomes a problem for the city and the residents that live there. So anyhow, just as a dope to be able to remember, that's what's really happening. And then it was interesting to watch the election. All those that were successful, thank you. And Mayor, we love you.
And I you.
Been great. Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
We have members of our audience that didn't understand what I was talking about with coming up to the microphone. Would the council be okay if we opened up public comments again?
Yes.
Sure.
Sure.
Absolutely.
If you would like to comment to the City Council, please come up to the microphone and state your name, please.
Hello, council. My name is Max Jones. I'm new to Midvale. I've lived here for about a year, to this date, actually. And I live on 7409 and have seen the house in front of me, 7407, the condemned house in front.
What street do you live on?
Just off of Main Street, down the street from here. And I was curious to ask you guys if you had plans for that property? And if it was possible to buy that property as well?
We don't.
Is it, is it city property?
It's not, we don't own it. It's not city property.
Okay.
And so it would have to be with the, the private owner of that, that property.
Okay.
Which is something that we can find online, but I don't have that information right offhand.
Yeah, online it just states that it is a condemned property. And I'm not sure how the city goes about that being or the information past that.
Well, is it, is it, we'll need to talk more because I need a little bit more information for I can respond to. Because I'm not sure if it is condemned by us for building services reasons or if it is closed down due to health reasons that would have been done by the county.
It would be for health reasons.
So if you would give your contact information to Cody, who I think you were maybe talking with back there.
Okay.
We can get back in touch with you about what we, what we would recommend. Or we can also look to see if there is something in our, if we already have some actions going on with regards to that property.
Okay.
But I can't speak to that right offhand.
Okay. Yeah, I just have, I have plans if there isn't anything in the foreboding of the future that I could push onto that property to bring business more into Midvale. And yeah, that's basically all I really wanted to find out, talk to somebody about the whole property thing, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max. Anyone else like to speak to the council? All right, seen none. We'll move now to Dustin Gettle.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we do have a meeting next week, I'm going to reserve any election comments until next week. I think it would be more appropriate at that time. I did just want to say very quickly that the Halloween celebration on Main Street was, in my estimation and in my view, a, a great success. I was very happy with just the endless amounts of people who were coming there all day long. I've never seen this parking lot so filled ever, just during the week, you know, whatever. It's never been as filled as it was. In fact, it might have been the first time ever that people were looking for parking spots at City Hall because they were at a, a premium that day. So, you know, everyone here, city staff who was involved in that, thank you for all that you did in that celebration, but also to the businesses on Main Street where we found, you know, there were some complaints online, as there is all the time. But, you know, the business owners on Main Street, a lot of them spent their own money for treats, for decorations, for everything related to this event. And we couldn't thank them enough for what they did on, for that event. It was great. It was amazing, and I can't wait to see what happens for our holiday celebration on Main Street. And with that, Mayor, that's it for me tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Quinn Sperry?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, Bryant Brown?
Yeah, I had a handful of things, but Councilmember Glover, I think, stole my notes and then just said them all. Literally everything I was going to say.
That's when you were in the other room. I came here and.
Yeah, looked at my computer, so. The only thing I'd like to add a tiny bit to that is me, and I understand the prop, the property owner actually painted the red curb for the Motto. So that's why it sort of stops right on the property line. I want to make sure we keep looking into at least getting it extended to the gas station's entrance because, you know, people will sneak, people seem to see the red curb and they don't park, but they will, they will put their car anywhere that doesn't have it, so. Other than that, nope. That's all I had tonight.
Okay, seems red paint has been purchased a lot in our city recently and then used. Councilmember Heidi Robinson, please.
I just wanted to echo Councilmember Gettle said about the Halloween event. Thank the Midvale Main Business Alliance for all of the work that all of the businesses put into that. I really expect it just to continue to grow, and I hope that we get more participation with the community and supporting events like this so that we can keep adding these things to the calendar. That's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand we've got some Christmas celebration lined up, Laura, coming in December.
I'm going to talk to Kate about that. Yeah, it's like it's going to be December 3rd, so yeah, it'll be a holiday themed event.
All right, mark your calendars.
Yep.
December 3rd. What's the hours on it, you know?
Um, I'll have to look. It's in the evening. It's going to be Friday night, but I want to say it's September 5th, but I think the line of the street will be at 7:30, so. Yeah, it'll be Friday evening.
Okay. Maybe you can prepare an announcement for our City Council member, meeting next week? And let's get that out there. Good idea. Thank you. All right. Next is my report and I want to echo, I think, every one of us that were up for election this year, how pleasant it was to go through the neighborhoods and talk to people face to face at their doors, to hear some complaints. They were hopefully written down and passed back to the city to be addressed. But I really enjoyed meeting the citizens, and I hope they enjoyed meeting with me. I only had one person ever give me a big, heck, no, I'm not going to vote for you. There was one of them. And other than that, if they voted for me or not, they were friendly. And that's Midvale for you. That's friendly, even to someone you don't support. And I finally said, well, if I'm not your top vote, am I in your top three? And they always said yes. Now, we only had less than 4,000 out of our 12 or 13, 14,000 voters even return a ballot. That is just plain awful for Midvale. That is just plain awful. And it almost makes me want to hang my head in shame that a city would have that low of a rate of participation in their own government. In the one that they can walk in the front door here and complain about the high bill for water. There's a speed bump I need on my street, you name it. You can walk right in here and, and get your voice heard. And to not vote? I don't understand that personally. So in our commitments to our citizens, we need the commitment that we can get back from them that, well, two years from now, we'll have another election for three city council members. We need participation. We need to know the voice of the people. It's just part of democracy. It's the price we all pay for living in these 48 contiguous and 50 states. And even territories get to vote on some elections. How come we can't here in Utah and in Midvale get a high percentage? I, I think we can do, I know we can do much, much better. There are so many decisions made by this council and the representatives of this city that are a direct reflection upon the city. You need to be sure the one representing you has your interests at heart. Now you won't, there's one thing about elections. There's more equal number or more losers than there are winners. Especially in ranked choice vote. I mean, look at Sandy. They had one winner, seven losers. Now, do they go home and pout and say, I'm never running again? I'm never going to participate in elections. I'm never going to vote again? No. We go back home, we look at the next election. I hope I've got somebody I can vote for that will win an election. We need to commit to get involved in the community, find out who the people are that have the ideas similar to yours, and make sure they run for an office. Make sure they have your vote. It's very important in a democracy. Today I attended a meeting of the State Homelessness Committee as the representative of Midvale. All the mayors that have a shelter in Utah are represented besides state officials. And there are five cities in Utah that have shelters. And we, we've talked about funding of shelters in preparing information and, and proclamations for the legislature for the next legislature that opens up in late January next year. And so there's things that go far beyond these four walls of City Hall that the city participates in. And you need to have a voice. You need to have a voice that carries the weight of the city behind it. And that's why elections are so important. And to sit home and not vote is just beyond me. We've talked in our prior meeting about a traffic committee. And I want to let you know that shortly, and I don't know, it might be a month or two, we'll have some information out on how you can bring complaints about the traffic in your area up to the city, and it gets analyzed and decided what to do if there's something that can be done from a city level. So let's, let's make sure, and I know as we went around knocking on doors, there were at least one a day, somebody would complain about some traffic condition in their neighborhood. All right, so that's the kind of thing we need to bring up. I want to commend the Public Works Department. I turned in many, many complaints out there, and they were Johnny on the spot fixing them. The latest one I want to pass on is cleaning up the weeds on the state property behind the homes on Adams Street down at Harvard there. She left a message of much appreciation for making that area look like it belonged to a city again. And I know we're working with UDOT to get some remediation there. But thanks to Public Works for picking up the ball there. That's all I have. So Matt Doll, it's yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention just two things this evening. The first one, it's already been brought up, but I just wanted to reiterate at least my appreciation to staff for the work that they did to get, work with the businesses to get the Halloween party to be such a success on Main Street a couple of weekends ago. While it has been unfortunate, and we've talked about it before, over the course of the last several months where we've had a lot of turnover on staff, we have definitely also had the benefit of having some really great staff members, or new staff members start. And with that comes new ideas and some, you know, new, new skill sets and just ways of helping us look at things in a different way. This evening we've got, not only, I mean, Nate, I don't know if you're still new, but since most of the time you've been here was COVID time, I'll still consider you in that, in that camp. But between Nate and Kate and Cody, who, and Laura, who were involved with that Halloween party, sorry, Halloween event, that, and the success that ended up being, I think does show that we have, while it's difficult as we lose longtime staff members, some of the new folks that we brought in have really been beneficial. And I really appreciate all of the hard work that they do and continue to do for this community. Basically, we get done with some of these events, and I don't know that we spend enough time celebrating them before we just say, what's next? And, and we move on to those things. So again, it just speaks to the quality of our staff. Speaking of new people added to our staff, I did want to give an opportunity for you to meet Brad Jewitt. He is our new emergency planner. He is replacing Julie Harvey. Why don't you come on up? I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail, other than that it'll seem that way because I'm going to say what's at the bottom of his email as part of his signature. It says firefighter hazmat tech, paramedic, FPC, CCEMTP, emergency planner, intelligence specialist. And then he doesn't have on there that he is also a hospital corpsman, master chief, command senior enlisted, is that?
Yes, that's correct.
I would say that with the.
You're doing great.
With the Navy Reserve, so. That's a lot of stuff. That is way more stuff on your signature block than on mine. I hope some people understood what some of those acronyms meant, but why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Matt, and City Council. Great to be here and meet all you guys tonight. I'll keep my remarks short and everything. Grew up in Salt Lake. I've been in the EMS field for 25 years. I started with Gold Cross and then went over to the fire service. I've been with Unified Fire ever since. So as Matt said, yes, I work as a paramedic. I do the hazmat team as well. I don't do the heavy rest. I don't do the heavy rescue stuff. I don't like hitting off a rope. I'd rather get in a suit and deal with chemicals, so it's a little funner that way. So I've been stationed all over, times in Midvale. Recently, I was up in Cottonwood Heights on the ladder truck up there. So we were always down here for any big scenes or that sort of thing. Been working with Salt Lake County during, with COVID since last year, of March of last year. I got pulled in as part of the COVID response, and I was the advanced medical planner for Salt Lake County. And been doing that ever since. We also stood up the new intelligence branch that now functions with Salt Lake County. So I still participate in all that as well. As Matt also alluded to, I do have 19 years in with the Navy Reserve, currently stationed at Camp Pendleton. So I do travel there at least once a month. I have about 700 or so sailors I take care of in nine different states and assigned to, you know, the hospital over there. So again, 19 years, I've been deployed overseas six times, four in the Middle East, the rest have been on humanitarian type missions. So kind of the big three goals for right now with the city is I've just been reviewing you guys' plans, what you have in place, and what we need to do moving forward with them. The first priority is just getting a good training plan established. I'm almost done with it with the first draft. Then I'll get it over that over to Kyle and to Matt to review, but that'll cover FY, or calendar year '22 and for '23. So we'll have a two-year training plan, get you guys up to speed on your roles, and we ever have to use the Emergency Operations Center, what you guys need to do and what your functions are and how that operates. So any questions or anything?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service also in the Naval Reserve.
Sorry, that's on.
Okay. We'll now enter our department reports portion of the agenda and invite Jeremy Thorne to come up and tell us what's going on in Public Works. Boy, you gotta be getting ready for snow, I'll bet.
Yeah, one of the many things. Well, Mayor and Council, excited to be here. It's an honor to come up and talk about the work that the great people over at Public Works are doing for the community and represent them. So the end of last week, Glenn came to me and said, oh, by the way, when you're covering me at council, you have to do the Public Works update. So it was kind of a funny thing between us because there's been a lot of, by the way, since I've been here. And a good learning experience for me anyway. So hopefully I can man these controls okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So what I wanted to do was give a quick update for each of the divisions, what they've been up to over like the last six weeks, some stats pertaining to the work that they do on a daily basis. And then at the end, kind of go over some things that we have some vision and some change over for Public Works. The Water Division, they repaired six water leaks, cleaned and exercised 78 valves, two fire hydrants, and one valve have been replaced. They added two service lines to the systems, and 54 routine water samples were taken and submitted to the lab. The Oak Street well was also shut down and winterized. For the Sewer Division, the camera truck inspected 7,200 feet of main line. Two main line blockages were cleared. Vector cleaned 3,300 feet of main line and two blockages were cleared at the lift stations. The Stormwater Division, Vector cleaned main line and boxes. The registered stormwater inspector, two of our maintenance workers passed that exam. Seasonal ditch maintenance was performed post canal shutdown, which is a lot of weed control and, and cleaning up and getting prepared for the spring season. Repair and maintenance to the cyclones that catch the dirt and debris that entered the Jordan River down at the Bingham Junction when we had our big flood event. Two of those were damaged, and so they were able to dislodge during some of our, the debris and clean them out, but they still had repairs that had to be done, and they've recently done those as well. They also haul all of their debris from the yard to the landfill. They do daily sweeping in the city, and they installed a new storm drain inlet to the system at 70 Enter South. The Streets Division, they are out cutting tree branches that are impeding the right of way. And some of that has to do with anything that would impede a city vehicle from driving down the street and doing the job that we need to do on a daily basis. They have been installing and replacing street signs, cleaning trashes from the underpasses. They've installed asphalt patches for street repair and water leaks. They prepare trucks for the snow season, installing salters and prepping the plows. They also have been replacing sidewalk. And like the Mayor mentioned, we've been clearing open space, brushing weeds around in some of our open space areas. The parks have continued their seasonal maintenance. They also shut down and winterized all the parks facilities. And they prefer, this week, they've been preparing the cemetery for Veterans Day. And in that time, the last six weeks, we've completed 13 burials. Overall, for Public Works, our annual snow clearing meeting was done a few weeks ago. We met at Public Works. In that meeting, we go over our routes, the policies, the procedures that we use. Some of the established operators go through with new people and people that have plowed but not within our city and give them pointers, some of the things that to look out for and ways to utilize the equipment properly. From there, we went out in the yard and we walked through most of the trucks, the two different types that are the most common that we run, and went over how to set the salt, how to fill it, how, what the, just walked around the whole vehicle, front to back, top to bottom, gave instruction, and got us ready to drive vehicles and get ready for the, the snow equipment that we utilize. And they also set up some obstacles in the yard. And anyone who has not driven a snowplow before or was new to the city actually got to drive through the obstacles. And some of the experienced people went through the obstacles as well and showed them how to use the blade in, in tight circumstances around turns, how you turn it while you're maneuvering around tight areas or turnarounds. So it was a good overall training for the group that we have. Safety, one thing that we've decided to change within our safety program that we are in current development of is we're shifting towards an internal training wherever possible. And that includes our first three that I have listed there, which will be trench shoring, confined space, and lockout-tagout. So we're putting a division in charge of each of those trainings. And not only does it help them learn and educate themselves, it gets us in-house people that become more competent and have a better safety value and can help a lot better with our trainings every year. We are doing bi-weekly divisional meetings that are kind of a toolbox meeting that each of the divisions complete on a, on a two-per-month basis. Holiday lights, up to date there, the City Hall lights are installed and the signage on the light poles, they may go within the next two weeks and get those installed. It's all dependent on weather and workload. For sure, it will be the week after Thanksgiving if they can't fit it in in the next two weeks. So just to get you up to speed there, that, that stuff is being installed. Levi is still gonna troubleshoot the timers and some of the issues that we are having here at City Hall and get that taken care of. And then the Veterans Day flags, all of the divisions sent people over with the Parks Division and helped to get those set. So it's quite a task for them to do. They'll be doing that tomorrow, and it's a, something that we, we share responsibility That's kind of the end of my report. I just wonder if I have any comments or questions from you.
Jeremy, I have a quick question. As far as the holiday decorations go, does that include lights on the old City Hall building as that project was described? Maybe Matt knows the answer, or anyone who's helped planning the holiday tree lighting event on Main Street?
Right. To my understanding, no. My understanding is that it's just on this building here at this point.
I apologize, I missed.
My question was whether the holiday light included the, the new, the old City Hall building, is that lighting and tree ceremony that I've discussed?
I think that's coming through a different channel than our normal
Okay. Okay. So I'm not gonna worry yet.
Yeah.
Okay. Don't worry.
No, don't worry. We'll, we'll light it up.
Okay. And also, and also for the, the flag placing, if you need any help with that, I'm sure, well, I would be interested in helping if you need
Okay.
Help, and maybe other council members or the Mayor might
Okay.
Be interested in that as well. I didn't know that was something that we did, to be honest. It sounds like a great opportunity to get out and...
Yeah, if you would, if you would like, I can find the time and just send it to the group, that they'll get started if there's, if there is interest.
And thank you, obviously, for all that you guys do. It's often unnoticed, but not unappreciated.
Any questions for Jeremy? Comments? Thank you, Jeremy.
All right, thank you.
The next item is our consent agenda to consider the minutes of October 18, 2021.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none. Lori?
Councilmember Sperry.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
And Gettle.
Yes.
Thank you. We have one action item on this agenda, consider ordinance 2021-021, an ordinance adopting a road cut moratorium and restoration standards for qualifying streets within Midvale City. And looks like Keith is up taking the charge on this.
Thank you. Not to, certainly not to take away any thunder from Nate, who was instrumental in getting this and to introduce this project or this to you a couple of weeks ago. Basically, in an effort to keep our road network as, roadworthy as possible, we've come up with a road cut moratorium. Basically, what it will do is on any reconstructed and recently overlaid streets, there will be a three-year road cut moratorium where no road, road cut permits will be issued except in the case of emergencies, emergency situations or new development that may come in that may need to tie into existing utilities. If that were to happen, then there is a special restoration portion of this moratorium that they would need to follow as they restore their road cut permits. On streets that were recently slurried, then that moratorium is for one year. Following those, that three-year or one-year timeframe, then the special restoration standards come in for an additional three years for overlaid or reconstructed roads or new roads, and one year for the slurry seal roads. We feel that this will help us, again, maintain our road network in as good a condition as we possibly can. We spend considerable amount of time and, and money each year in our payment management program. And it is discouraging to see those new roads cut up and, 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 you know, not destroyed, but, but cut up and checkerboard with road cuts or different utilities that come in. We obviously recommend the passage of this ordinance. We have a copy of the ordinance for your consideration. If you decide to pass it, then we will implement it. We have actually, in some of our couple pre-construction meetings we've held recently with developers and contractors that are looking to do work over the next, or start work within the next few months, have given them a warning that this was a possibility and that they would need to take extra care and effort in restoring their road cuts. So any questions, concerns I've got? Again, we've got an ordinance for you to consider, and we obviously would recommend passing to that.
I'm, I'm all in favor of this. The one thing that frustrates me is, you know, we, we, you would think someone that came in and cut the roads would try to put the road back to how it was beforehand. Like, I hate that government has to make rules all the time that people have to follow, and everyone complains about, oh, there's too much government, blah, blah, blah. But, you know, like, Wasatch is a nightmare, and they just did such a bad job. So, you know, if, 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 you know, people are frustrated, you know, a builder or something, it's like, well, our hands have been forced because people have done such a bad job. Like, I want to be that clear. Like, we're only making this rule now. Midvale's been around since 1909, as the, as the picture says. And it's because it's like we've gotten worse product from people. So it's needed. It's unfortunate we have to make more rules, but that's why.
You're exactly right, Councilmember Brown. It's self-inflicted somewhat with the lack of, of effort on developers and contractors part. So some are do really good, some obviously aren't. So this kind of levels the playing field for everybody. But yeah, you're absolutely right.
I appreciate your work on it.
Just one question. This is only Midvale roads, not state roads, right? Or is it?
Correct. No, only Midvale roads. We, we don't have any jurisdiction over state roads. I know the state does have some
I'm sure they have their
Conditions. And we've had to follow them as we've pre-see, or repaired leaks in 7,200 South or State Street. Just so you know, State Street, Ninth East, and 7,200 Southwest of State Street are all UDOT roads.
What will the enforcement mechanism be for the special restoration standard? Is that you or someone going out and say, yeah, this looks good enough? Or?
That, that will, yeah, that will be me. Steve Bush on my staff deals with most of our road cut permits and deals with all surface restoration. So between he and I, we require obviously a bonding with road cut permits. Or failure to issue new road cut permits should, you know, people
And as I recall, we raised that bond
Yeah.
Amount significantly.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree that this is needed. I mean, we started talking about this years ago when we were bonding to repair all the roads. And then we did that. And I know I was frustrated as soon as, I mean, it seemed like just weeks after we did it, you're watching people cut into the road. So I'm glad that we are there. There, there's one thing that I need to ask if we have, you know, a policy of how we give notice before we do a slurry seal or a mill and overlay or something on the road to those entities that may need to cut in.
I think, as, I've been thinking about this, and I haven't talked to Nate at all about this, so, so this is kind of new to him as well. As we go through and look at our next three-year payment management system, I'd like to get those streets posted on our website so that at least people will realize or will have an idea of what streets that we will be looking at and what streets will fall under this moratorium.
Okay. I mean, I just know, at least it's my understanding, before we redid a lot of those roads, we gave notice to several entities
Right.
In hopes that they would go and do their projects that they had planned for the next few years. And I don't know how well they did that. And so
Well, look at Wasatch, and you can
Right. Right. I mean, I get it if there's builders coming in, but I, I think of like, you know, the improvement district or other utilities where they know if they're gonna have to do improvements, unless it's an emergency or something. So hopefully they could plan accordingly, but
And, and we would obviously be willing to work if, if somebody, whatever, would come in and say, hey, we've got a major project on this road. We see it's on your list. Maybe we could work with them and say, okay, when's your project due? We could
Right.
Maybe reevaluate. We sat down with Public Works a few weeks ago, well, within the last month, and looked at their water master plan and at their water master plan and some of the projects that they have coming up and are, you know, shifting or looking at the road projects we have accordingly so that we don't, don't be our own worst enemy, basically. So we're trying to coordinate with Public Works and making that happen.
Other questions for Keith? Comments? Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. Nate, did you want to add anything?
No, not really. The, I, I think to the point of notifying utilities with the five-year capital plan, typically you can put in the different roads that are going to be and try to coordinate that with, with the utilities. We've done the study behind, in between Main Street and Holden where we actually contacted all the utilities, so, so we have all those contacts. Not, not, not easy to work with the utilities, for sure, but I mean, going out and letting them know that we're going to do this and hopefully they respond and say, we're planning on putting a major pipeline or doing something that helps us coordinate when we're doing the roads, so it's, we can try to coordinate that best we can both ways so that we minimize impacts as much as we can, but it's always difficult just lining up all those different schedules when they have money set aside to do certain things. It takes a lot of coordination and willingness on the part of the utilities, but we'll work on that for sure.
Very good. Thank you, Nate, for that input. I'll entertain a motion, ladies and gentlemen.
Motion to adjourn.
Nope. Not yet.
Nope. I moved that we adopt ordinance number 2021...
Hey, I'm ready.
-O-21 authorizing the use of the road cut moratorium.
Second, and I will second Councilmember Glover's motion at the appropriate time as well.
The best is I sort of did that last week, so it kind of like already over.
All right, Rory, this is a test for you now. We've got two motions on the floor.
Councilmember Glover?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
And Sperry?
Aye.
Okay, and we'll take your motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Already, going. All right. We'll reconvene in just a couple of minutes when we're ready to continue with our redevelopment agency.
That's great, Paul. It's almost like, you know, when she's doing roll call, if we're still here and we say aye or something because we're just a little out of it.
Okay, board members. Gettle?
Here.
Sperry?
Aye.
Brown?
Did anybody catch up? Come on.
Kate, here. Well, I didn't know how to respond.
Robinson?
Here.
And Glover?
Here.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comments. Anyone that would like to make a comment to the board of the redevelopment agency is welcome to come to the microphone, state your name and give your comments. I don't see anybody, so we'll move next to a public hearing. I'd like a motion to open a public hearing.
We've got a motion?
We've got a public hearing?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to open a public hearing. Any comments or questions on the motion? Rory? Or let's see, we just need to yay and aye.
Right.
All in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed? All right, we are now in a public hearing to consider amendments to the Jordan Bluffs Project Area Plan, Bingham Junction Project Area Plan and Main Street CDA Plan. Cody, this is your time. Nope. Kate? All right, Kate.
I'll present the beat, Cody, for a minute.
You're really happy.
You have to speak, oh.
Okay. Yep, got the slide. Bringing that up, so I presented on the plan amendments, the changes that we wanted to make to the Bingham Junction Project Area Plan, the Jordan Bluffs Project Area Plan and the Main Street Community Development Project Area Plan back on September 7th. As part of the procedure to move forward with the amendments, we had to send out notice and post on Utah Public Notice and then on the city website and make available those amendments that we're proposing. It has now been past the 30 days and so we are bringing it back before the board for a resolution. And so again, the main purpose of these amendments is to amend the Bingham Junction and Jordan Bluffs Project Area Plan so that we can do transfer of funds for an inter-agency loan to help support the revolving loan program for the Main Street program. And then the main changes to the Main Street CDA Plan, just updated the zoning and land use information and had updates to the conformance of the CDA to the general plan and the goals and the consolidated list of the identified projects created for the Main Street project And so, yep, so we'll have the public hearing and then I do have the recommended motion. Looks like I have to plug this in here. Oh, wait, just kidding. It's already up there. I just didn't use the clicker. Okay, so that's the motion and if we have any questions, I'm happy to answer it.
Any questions for Kate? All right. This is a public hearing. So anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this proposal to make modifications to the Bingham Junction, Jordan Bluffs and Main Street redevelopment plans may come to the microphone, state your name. I see none, so I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any comments or questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now I'll entertain a motion as proposed.
Mayor, I move to pass Resolution Number 2021-21, RDA, and adopt the proposed amendments to the three project areas' plans related to intra-agency loans and funding the revolving loan program.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now's the time to ask questions. Any questions on this motion? Okay, I hear none, so Rory, would you ask the question?
Yes, Board Member Brown?
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
Sperry?
Aye.
And Robinson?
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous, now we'll go to the consent agenda to consider the minutes of October 19, 2021.
I move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none? Rory?
Board Member Gettle?
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
Sperry?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
And Brown?
Yes.
Very good. We now have one action item, Consider Resolution 2021-22, RDA, a resolution approving funding recommendations from the Main Street Public Art Program Advisory Board. Cody's going to do this one. Okay, Cody?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, and thank you, everyone, too, participated, took part in and supported the event that we had on Halloween. As was said previously, very successful, great participation from the businesses on Main Street, overwhelming participation from the public, and it definitely seemed like it was very much Midvale residents that were participating. Got a very strong draw from, from the locals, so that's great.
Thanks so much for the RDA staff for pitching in.
Absolutely. And on, on the subject of Main Street, we have a public art program from the Main Street and it, here's an overview of it. The goal is to basically provide public art and make it accessible and, and available to the, to the public in the Main Street area. The budget, the total budget that we approved is 1.9 million over the 20 years of the life of the CDA and for fiscal year 2022, it's $15,000. And a design advisory board convened and considered the public art opportunities that are available right now. The staff at your direction as well as at the direction of the design advisory board seeks out public art opportunities, talking to artists and business owners, property owners, and we, we brought together four different options and the design advisory board is, would like to recommend funding two of those public art pro, programs, projects. The first one is, the, the requister is Steve from Webaholics and this is right on Main Street at 7633 South Main Street and the cost, total cost is 10,000. Steve has, is able to put in 2,000 and he's looking for 1,500 from the citywide mural program and then 6,500 from the Main Street Public Art Program. And that's a bigger rendering, but it's basically Old Town Main Street, kind of a mural of, of looking down Main Street on that facade right there. So the advisory board recommends funding this mural and then the redevelopment agency has commissioned art boxes, a four-by-four for chalk that patrons, people going to events can, can draw on, and then an eight-by-eight, eight-foot-by-eight-foot art cube with different panels on it and it's something that we'll be reusing for events going forward. And so this has already been commissioned and paid for by the redevelopment agency and we ask that it be, the funds be allocated towards the public art program and the design advisory board recommends allocating the funding there. And so that is $3,000 for, for that project. And so the recommendation is to allocate 6,500 for the downtown old Midvale mural as well as the 3,000 for the art boxes and then to utilize the remaining 5,500 for other proposals before the end of this fiscal year, including a mural proposed by Dark Arts, who is well acquainted with a pretty famous mural, mural artist, Cyril. He's done mural work throughout Salt Lake and then also more statuary and, and improving the benches and, and other areas through statuary. And so that's what we're going to be looking into as well as free art opportunities, a permission wall that wouldn't cost anything, it would just be a matter of programming it and running it. And so this is the recommendation from the design advisory board and go, in the future, we will be, you know, having an RFP, a call for artists and, and the board will be considering multiple submissions from artists and, and having that be considered, but for now, these are the projects that we've, we have. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Questions for Cody?
Why is it 2999 instead of just 3,000?
So that has to do with, we're working on the, how we acquire art or pay procurement. The procurement process is still such with, with this program that if it's 3,000 and over, with 3,000 to 25,000 is the number, I believe, you, you have to have bids.
Okay.
Several proposals and if it's over 25,000, then you have to have an RFP and so it's just under the 3,000, so we're in the process of making that...
I don't, I don't super like that, that we're like putting it right at that number to avoid the process, like, understand if it comes in at 25 or something, like, that's what it is, but...
Yeah.
But to avoid that rule by going a dollar or under, I, I don't think that necessarily looks great.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't know how the people feel.
So you want it 2999.99?
Yeah, that would, that would actually make it slightly like better, but I don't...
Yeah. I think the...
There's the extra dollar right there in the remaining before the end of the year it all gets used.
Yeah.
No, okay, I, I was wondering if it had something to do with procurement, I mean...
It does and we're in the process of making it so that we can procure art from an artist who's proposed it without having to get it, get bids, basically, which kind of defeats the purpose of having a public program that's open to anyone that would like to request funding.
We, already under our current policy, if there's certain professional services that we receive, we don't have to go through that procurement process. Usually that has to do with when we're going out to people who have a specialty skill or whatever that is, that attorneys or, what did I say?
Professional services.
Professional, sorry, professional services. And when you look at sort of the definition of the other professional services, art would seem to fall under that because it's sort of a unique product as opposed to a common product or whatnot. And so we're looking at, as Cody said, we're looking at making that change. So we're basically sort of saying that this one type of activity probably fits closer to another activity, so while we have done the $2,999 thing in this particular case, we really think that definitionally, these are activities that would fit into that category that would not make that $3,000 be the threshold.
Cool. Yeah, I would just like to put that in the, into the wording so it's covered. I just don't, I don't want someone to go, oh, wow, they're just trying to avoid some, you know, something that, you know...
But also as long as we stay within the budget that we allocated for these types of projects, that see this as just staff being maybe overly cautious about, you know, a general rule that we have for other procurement things. I'm interested in the boxes. It says that they would be displayed during events, so I'm assuming like we'll have, you know, several boxes, you know, some might be Halloween themed and some might be, you know, Christmas themed or...
Right, so for example, for the event on, in December, we're going to just turn the panels around so that the Halloween stuff is facing inward and it's going to be a candy house, they're going to paint a roof on it and outline door and windows and then we'll have candy and frosting available for basically a gigantic gingerbread house that the box will facilitate.
Can we sample that beforehand? No, I think it's great. I, I love the idea and where are we going to store those boxes? They seem pretty big in the picture.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be able to store that in the art house.
Okay.
For the time being.
Okay. Cool. I'll ask no more questions and you do, you do your thing.
I'm here to answer your questions, so...
Any further questions? Hearing none, let's have an action item, resolution.
Mayor, I move that we pass Resolution Number 2021-22, RDA, and adopt the public art funding recommendations from the Main Street Public Art Programs Design Advisory Board.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Rory?
Board Member Glover?
Aye.
Sperry?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
And Gettle?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was unanimous, one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thanks, everyone.